All right. We are at 7 o'clock, so I'll call our city council meeting to order. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. All second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. And agenda is passed. Our next item is open forum. Open forum is any resident's opportunity or any interested party's opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. And we'll see if we've got anyone signed up who's wishing to speak in open forum this evening. Anyone on the list and anyone in the audience looking for open forum? All right. With that, we will move back to council. And council, for your consideration, is consent agenda items 6A through 6O. And I'm looking for a motion or any changes to the consent agenda.
Mayor Bain. I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 6A through 6O.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our first item of our regular agenda this evening is the downtown plan. And Dan, would you like to kick us off first?
Mayor, members of council, before you tonight is the final draft of the downtown plan. It's a pretty exciting night. We've been working on this for about the past year and a half, so it's finally here for final adoption and consideration. We do have Rita here this evening from HKGI. We'll do a brief overview of the process of the plan and then give a high level review of the plan itself. And we'll also be here to answer any questions you may have regarding the plan. But before I turn it over to Rita, I do want to mention a couple of things just about the final version of the plan. The final version of the plan does contain one small edit from the version that was in your packet. On the acknowledgement page, we do have in there an acknowledgement for CDA, for Washington County CDA, for helping to fund the study. So that is on the acknowledgement page of the final version. I also want to mention that the EDA Planning Commission and the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission all have reviewed the plan and all of them have passed motions recommending approval of the plan. If there was any feedback from those groups, I did summarize that in the memo that was included in the packet as well, so council is aware of any feedback that they have for adoption. And then finally tonight, I do want to mention that approving the plan this evening does not approve the funding for the plan. We're not committing funds to the plan tonight. We're basically just approving the plan. Staff is working on a CIP for the plan that we'll bring forward at a later date. So tonight's approval is just the plan itself and not the funding mechanism at this point. And with that, I'd be turning it over to Rita to go through the plan itself.
Thank you, Dan. Welcome, Rita. It's good to see you again.
Nice to see you all again. I'm just waiting to see when I'm on the screen. Great. Again, it's a pleasure to be in front of you and to be at the end of the process. I know I met a lot of you when we were doing the initial tour last summer. So it's exciting to walk through the plan with you. Again, this is the study area for the plan that focuses on downtown. That just gives you a kind of a visual picture from above of what's been included in the downtown study area. As you may be aware, the process involved eight steps. Those steps started by organizing the effort, having the tour, meeting with stakeholders, all the way down to creating the implementation strategy. On the bottom side, bottom right, you can see the three kind of places where we had community engagement, and that's probably what I'll spend a little bit of time reviewing with you this evening. We had three different points. One during values and vision, where we tried to make sure we capture the vision adequately for downtown. A second one, when we were trying to really focus on what are the alternatives or what are the directives for downtown? And the third one is when we actually had a draft plan to provide, to seek feedback from the community. So just talking a little bit about engagement, as was requested, we tried to really work on a robust process that provided a variety of opportunities, both in person and virtual, throughout the process. During that first step of engagement, the vision and values, you can see we were at Arts in the Park and tried to have an interactive booth and ways to draw people in to just give us their thoughts about downtown. We also had an online survey, an idea wall, and an interactive mapping tool. And as you can see, we had high engagement in many of those in the actual participation summary, well over 1,000 comments, visits for the word wall, 2,000 comments for the map tool. So really a great way to kind of spark participation and awareness of the downtown plan itself. Then we had the in-person and online workshop. Given that we were in COVID, we tried to offer both options at the same time, which was great. I'm glad that you had the technology in place to do it because it really was a robust discussion on both sides. And if those of you who attended, that was where we focused on kind of identifying what are those key audiences? Why are people drawn to downtown? Again, part of our learning process. And then there were stakeholder interviews that involved 27 businesses, 27 stakeholders, 16 businesses and five property owners. So again, trying to engage people that are really living and breathing and being in downtown as part of the learning and vision and values process. Then we went into exploring alternatives. So that's after we had the directives or kind of the key messages of the downtown plan. Again, we had the in-person and online workshop. This phase of the process was a little bit different because we actually had a series of videos where people could watch videos about each of the directives and then provide their comments and feedback. And hopefully you agree that that seemed to go well in really educating folks about the whys and what we were planning and what we were suggesting. And then you can see kind of in the middle, some of the ways that people provided feedback in the exploring alternatives. And then the last phase is really the converging on a preferred plan. So once we had a draft plan, we still had an open house and there was more than 60 attendees at the open house. Hopefully you've seen the boards as well. We've left them in City Hall for folks to peruse whenever they're here. And then again, the website with some video overview. So we tried to provide multiple opportunities, different ways to reach people where they are, where they're comfortable, to provide feedback during the process. The downtown vision statement, which you all adopted at the end of 2021. The vision for downtown is to create a district that is welcoming to a broad audience of business visitors and neighbors and a vibrant place with distinctive and memorable ways to experience it. Dining, recreating, socializing, shopping, living life. And the vision workshop, the first one, really got into kind of this part of it of what are those ways that people are attracted and what are the audiences that we're trying to attract? This graphic is kind of the summary graphic of the downtown guide plan. There's 11 directives that really cover a variety of different topics for how do we focus on land uses? How do we focus on connectivity, wayfinding, activation, actual activation of the lake as well as connecting the trail to the lake? So there's a variety of strategies. I am not going to go through each strategy, though I do have slides. Or if you have questions, I have the plan and I can certainly talk through any element. But we know that you've been involved in the process and you've had the plan, so I won't go into detail in any one of these, but I'm happy to talk more about them. But they're really kind of multi-layered. Certainly things work together, but certain elements are helpful on their own to keep moving you forward and creating the downtown that's envisioned. The downtown plan does include a detailed implementation plan. The implementation plan looked at providing a general cost estimate, kind of a high level, here's what we think it'll cost to achieve certain strategies that were included. And then there's a phasing that's provided, so identifying catalyst projects, things that, you know, are relatively lower costs that you can get going to show momentum to keep the plan alive and moving forward. Early phase projects that look out for five years, later phase projects that are five to 10 years out. And then opportunistic projects, meaning projects that maybe you can't predict when they will occur, but you should take the opportunity when they are available to make some changes and implement them when the opportunities arise. With that, Dan mentioned the plan has been reviewed and recommended for adoption by the EDA, the Planning Commission, and the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission. Staff is recommending approval as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions or dive into any more details. We just didn't want to take up too much of your time on your agenda this evening.
Understood. Thank you for that overview. Counsel, I would open it up just for any specific questions that you might have for Rita or questions that you might have for staff on maybe details of the plan that may still be open.
I don't have a question, but it's, you know, this has been worked over many, many times and everyone's had their opportunity to have input into it. And so, you know, it's still a work in progress, no matter what we do. We're talking about a 10-year to 15-year project, so things can evolve. But we got to start somewhere. That's all it demands to. Got to start with that blueprint. So I certainly support this plan.
Thank you for those comments. Other comments, questions?
I tend to agree with Councilmember Husnick. You know, there was a lot of energy and effort and enthusiasm put into this and a lot of engagement on the part of our greater community. And that, to me, I think, you know, that community engagement is so critical to the success of anything that we do, especially with this kind of a scope. So, and I know that we will have the potential for some additional community engagement as, you know, we start with those implementation pieces. So I agree with Councilmember Husnick that, you know, given the effort that's gone into this, I too support it wholeheartedly.
Excellent.
Mayor Bain, I just would concur. I think it was an excellent process. I think you did a wonderful job. I love that it's not our plan, but it's the community's plan and that we really actively engaged the community in all the ways that you stated. I have a question on the memo, and I don't know if this is a good time to ask it.
Yeah.
But it's in number five, and it's around the motion that was made at the Parks, Lakes and Trails Committee about removing the skate park from the plan. And I just want to say, I feel really strongly that I understand that they want to consider that broadly in other park areas, but I, the teens always lose out. And I just feel like if it's stated in there, it's gonna, it's, at least it's memorialized. There's history, there's context, there's, no, there's a discussion. I would really hate to disappoint those teenagers.
If I may, on that, that's why the staff recommendation was to keep that in there. Fully agree that it's probably a holistic, whole park system.
Sure.
But as long as it's memorialized in the plan here, that reference point, that touch point still exists in the plan for downtown. So it's more of a reminder as you kind of go through the system, it's like, oh, that's right, we talked about the teen park.
Yeah. Yes. And I'm not saying it has to be downtown, but I'm just saying I just, I don't, I heard about this from some teens before I came.
And I will also say that was a topic that came up at two of the open houses, and there was quite a bit of discussion, sort of sidebar discussions after the fact regarding that, which is another reason why that was added in.
Councilmember Munson's point, kind of, I'll piggyback that with just one of my overall points of that I think these 11 directives is the appropriate breadth of the plan. How we actually execute on all of those 11 directives is going to morph over time and go through individual project level consideration. I think that's maybe the headline, like a point to be made of, just so the community is clear on what the plan does and doesn't do. The plan paints an overall vision for downtown and an overall plan for downtown, but as it relates to specific projects related to each of those directives, whether it is a skate park or a bathroom facility at the park or a boat launch or any of those individual projects, parking facilities, each one of those are going to have to come through an individual project and budgeting and funding process. This provides some overall guidelines for each of those projects, which is why I think it's important. But again, how those individual objectives are actually achieved and how we might better serve teens, obviously there's, not obviously, but I just want to make the point that there's going to be a broader conversation on where do we do that? And is that at Belts Park or is it Lakeside Memorial? And so there is room for a broader conversation, which also is maybe my next point of, we have put together a plan with some perspective on costs just to gauge overall effort. Also important to note that those individual costs, some of those will be things that the city will consider in future funding cycles through our standard budget process. And some of those costs would be things that we would look to get from partner agencies, whether those are private investors or other private or other public partnerships we may have. Think MINDOT Washington County, for example, grant monies would be another source of funding. And so we're trying to paint a picture of what overall costs may look like. The city in the future may choose to bear some of those, and the city will likely choose and need to look for other alternative funding sources. And again, those are all part of future discussions. So the cost is really just to provide some perspective on scale and to help guide future discussions. Again, it's not to individually launch any individual projects right now or to provide funding or commitment to those individual projects. So it is very high level, but I also think that it's important to have this high level plan as we are considering those individual projects in the future, because one of the feedback points we hear continuously is that our current downtown plan is incredibly piecemeal. It is property by property. And without this type of a mechanism in place, we are at risk of just continuing that as future development comes knocking on our door, which is happening, which is great. So, you know, by intent, this is, I've heard some feedback that this is just too pie in the sky, it's too high level. Fair feedback, it is. The work needs to continue to get down to the next level. But again, I think we're looking to put together some umbrella overall guiding principles around parking, around the use of recreation, mixed use of space. We've got a lot going on in a very small footprint. And this is just to provide, again, that overall structure so we can do better at the individual project level in the future. So got a little longer-winded than what maybe I had intended, but it kind of relates back to we all could spend a lot of time on each of these individual points and will have an opportunity to do that in the future as we're considering those individual projects. And the point of the plan is really more at the holistic concept level. And I think we've met the mark, but also have identified a lot of future work that still needs to be done.
Other thoughts or questions at this point? Otherwise, I'm happy to entertain a motion if we are at that point as well.
Mayor Bain, I will make a motion to approve the downtown plan.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a quick note also to just really thank HKGI, our partners that have been by our side throughout this process, all of the staff work that has gone into this process, and then also EDA, the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, Planning Commission that have all weighed in, as well as all of our downtown planning committee and all of the residents that have individually and business owners that have individually kind of provided input to this process. We really appreciate it and thanks for all of the efforts. With that, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
All right. With that, we will move on to item 7B, which is a resolution for council's consideration to approve a Midco border-to-border broadband grant application. It could be a tongue twister.
It is. Mayor, members of council, before you tonight is a Midco border-to-border broadband grant application. And to provide a little background, as you may or may not be aware, there are quite a few pockets in the city of Forest Lake that are either unserved or underserved when it comes to broadband internet. And to help address this issue, Midco is applying for a border-to-border broadband grant through Minnesota Deed to help address the unserved or underserved areas within the, within the city. If this grant is awarded, initial math that was provided by Midco says that this will serve 341 homes additional. But more importantly, what it'll do is it'll actually serve this entire southeast corner of the city and tee it up for any future development. So any future development that comes into the area that's on your map will have fiber to premise ready to go. So it only sets it up for today, but it also sets it up for the future. So as development occurs in this area, broadband internet will be available for any new residents or businesses that do move into this, into this section of the city. The total cost for the application is approximately $2 million, and right now it's split between Midco and Deed. I do want to note that this is a competitive grant process, so there are other applicants making applications for these border-to-border dollars, which is why Midco has reached out and asked for a letter of support. They do say letters of support from local governments do help the grants compete better when they're going through the scoring process. I've also reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, and they've agreed to supply a letter of support as well. And they're also going to reach out to some local businesses for a letter of support from the business community as well. So we will, we will be able to provide those additional letters to Midco for their grant application when they do submit it to Deed. A local match, there is no official requirement for a local match for this grant application. However, if a local match is secured, it does give the grant application additional pointing in the competitive process for the grant. Therefore, staff is recommending a local match of $50,000 for this project. If the council does desire to commit that local match, enclosed in your packet is Resolution 072522-01, which does memorialize a $50,000 contribution to the grant if it is awarded. I also want to note that any local funds that we do commit to this project do not count towards Midco share, they buy down Deed share. So Midco is already in for their contribution to the Deed. Anything that we would be able to contribute would come down off the Deed contribution, so it doesn't apply to the private dollars that are already, Midco's already committed to the project. From a timeline standpoint, Midco is applying this summer for the grant. They said they should have a decision this fall from, from Deed whether or not they're successful in the application. If they are successful, they can anticipate 24 months to complete the project build-out. So we'd be looking at 2024, 2025 to have this area completely built out. Staff's recommendation is to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support for this project, as well as approval of Resolution 07-25-22-01, which is a local, memorializes a local match of $50,000 to this project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the application.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel, questions that you may have for Dan this evening?
No, no questions for me, just a comment. I could not be happier to hear that we're moving forward with this. This has been a long time coming, and it really hit home in 2020 when we shut down and everybody was staying at home. And we moved to distance learning and families were working from home, and we had a significant chunk of that southeast section of the city that could not access the internet. And so, or at least have reasonably good service in that area. They just didn't have, have the bandwidth to accommodate all the need that was occurring in their household. So this, this is phenomenal news and fingers and toes crossed.
If I also could mention too, Midco also applied for a Washington County broadband grant and was awarded one for the northeast section. I just couldn't locate the math exactly. I couldn't find it prior to the meeting. But there was another kind of pocket of underserved up there that actually is being served as well. So again, according to Midco's calculations, if they are awarded this grant, this basically serves the entire city with broadband, which is a major step forward for us.
And I don't think the need is going away, you know, with a lot of young people still learning from home and a lot of people still working from home. I don't think the need is going away. So thank you to staff for continuing to move this forward. I know it's been a little bit of a long haul, but I'm just glad we're at a point where, you know, we have a, an opportunity to rectify the situation for our citizens, hopefully.
I have just maybe two tactical questions. What is the timing if, if we were, if they're successful in getting grant funds, what is the timing for that match expected to be? And just where do we pay that from?
The match would come after, so it would be after the construction's completed. The way I understand it would be like, kind of like our MINDOT or ARIANODEX grant where we expand the funds and MINDOT reimburses us after the fact. In terms of where the funding would come from at this point, I don't think we've identified the exact source, but it'd be, it's not a 23 expense, it'd be probably a 24, 25 expense.
They'd end up on the CIP plan, and it's a future CIP item that we need to fund through.
Yeah, we would, we would find a way to budget for it in 24. It could either be through the CIP or capital or just out of general fund cash if we have that, could have surplus.
But 2024 budget consideration?
Yes.
If it's successful? Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Midco seems to be the, the one that we're focusing on. Is there a reason why they're better than anybody else or?
You know, they're the ones that, I mean, as you kind of see in the broadband market, I mean, a lot of people want fiber, they want that cable fiber, and they're a cable provider out here. And they're the ones that are actually going out making the, you know, I think Sensurlink is maybe in this area, some, I don't have the total system map, but Midco had reached out to competitors in the area and said, we're applying for this grant here. And as far as I know, nobody responded back to, you know, Midco on the, because they have to let the competitors know that they're looking to do an application in this area.
Don't get me wrong, I'm glad this is happening. I just want to make sure that we're supporting somebody that's being competitive, you know, whether or not the service is equal, equal service, that's the whole thing. So thanks for your answer, Dan.
So looking for, it could be a single motion of recommend the, the letter of support as well as the resolution, or we could do it in two separate, whatever is council's preference?
What, are we looking for a legal?
I'll take, I can take a stab at this.
Yeah, sure.
I move approval of the resolution of support authorizing the mayor to sign the enclosed letter of support and to approve Resolution 07-25-22-01, committing $50,000 to the project if Midco's application is successful.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And motion carries. All right. Next for consideration this evening, item 7C, which is construction of wells number seven and well number six, approved plans and specifications, and authorize ad for bid. And Ryan?
Mayor, state council, you have a request to approve specifications and authorize ad for bid for the construction of well number seven and well number six improvements. This will include construction of new municipal well number seven and improvements to existing well number six that will be be larger than planned for that's in our construction currently. The well capacity will be 1,500 gallons per minute each. That'll basically equate to 250 to 300 million gallons of water that the city will generate with the new treatment plants, which will obviously take a demand off our existing well three, four, and five that have been well assignment. It'll also help with the capacity needs and the larger demands that the city is facing. So if there's not any other questions, tonight's request is to approve plan specs and authorize ad for bid. We can see the schedule within the memo that would have a bid opening set targeted for August 2022.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ryan. Counsel, any questions for Ryan this evening? I'm just making sure I'm clear on timeline and my schedule just flipped. So, so tonight, approve plans and specs, and then we would be looking at construction in 2023. Well, construction starting September, ending in 2023, about a one-year construction cycle, is that right?
And trying to work around the existing project that's going on too and material delivery and stuff like that.
Yep. How is that timeline looking with current project? What does your crystal ball say?
Really crystal ball, probably most stuff happening right now.
Right.
When you get the order in and have to go there. So just like for instance, you know, I can't remember exactly when we awarded the legislation project or actually pre-concept for this week, but that was a long time ago.
Right. So with that, are you expecting that actual construction would be pushed back? Is that a potential or are you pretty confident that it does start?
It'll still be constructed in this timeframe that we have here. That's our anticipation now. Obviously, if something's way different than once the project's awarded and the contractor goes to place the orders, we'll have to.
Understand.
Bring some of that back and if it's way outside, you know, obviously we've got a new plant being constructed and dependent upon these two wells to be in operation and, you know, we've got a lot of development that's could be on the horizon. So we'll go as fast as possible.
Understand. All the more reason to move the process forward with authorizing bids this evening. So I get it. That's good. Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Council, any other questions? All right. With that, I would move that council authorize well number seven, well number six, authorize plans and specifications, and authorize for bid as indicated by staff.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is another resolution for council consideration around 190th, the Danninger Minor Subdivision. And Abby, walk us through this.
Thank you, Mary Bean. Luke Danninger owns an unaddressed parcel on 190th Street. It's a 56-acre parcel. He's looking to split the property into two separate units or separate parcels. One would be 20 acres, which Mr. Danninger would eventually build a home on, and the other one would remain as 36 acres that would be tillable land. The proposal conforms to the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. It has gone through staff review. There was discussion on the staff level about easement acquisition. There is also discussion in the parkland dedication from the Parks, Trails, Lakes Commission about the potential of an easement acquisition for Trail. Trail is proposed to run along 190th Street. If all my PDFs were the same size, they would bounce around. The challenge that the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission had determined at that time, however, was the trail would run through tillable acreage of Mr. Danninger's property. So, what the Parks, Trails, Lakes Commission has recommended is that we forego the trail easement at this time, that we accept a fee in lieu of land dedication of $3,500. It's a standard fee set for, per resolution for a single new lot's impact to the park system. The planning commission is also recommending approval, and staff is recommending approval incorporating the parkland dedication fee of $3,500 with no trail easement, but easements for the existing infrastructure that's in place. So, up on the screen there shows the roadway actually goes over the subject parcel, as do the utilities. There's no platted roadway through here. So, we'd like to acquire easement for the roadway and the utilities so that should we need to do work in this location, that the public has the security to do that in the future. So, staff is recommending you approve the enclosed resolution approving the Danninger Minor Subdivision. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you have any council questions that we might have?
I should also just note Luke Danninger is here if you have questions for him as well.
Okay, thank you.
Abby, I noted there are six conditions in the memo.
Correct.
So, it's contingent on meeting those six conditions that are outlined in the staff memo.
Yes, and those have been incorporated right as conditions of approval in the resolution.
Great. Okay, very good.
As it relates to the question of paying a park dedication fee versus providing access or easement related to future trail, what was, what's the applicant's preference? What was the origin, was there a preference that was expressed?
Well, I think Mr. Danniger's preference was to be not pay or dedicate, but he does not.
To do neither?
Yeah. But, he doesn't want to lose the tillable acreage right now. And we've discussed it at length with our legal counsel right now, because there is not that trail plan going through there, the fee in lieu of land dedication is appropriate.
Okay. Understand, in absence of, with either of those being on the table, that is, I'm seeing your head now, that is your preferred route as well? Okay.
And you're in total agreement with everything that was on this proposal? Not completely, but you're going to agree to it if we vote for it, essentially?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to clear that up.
Right. It's, I mean, I, yeah, it's, we have a limited number of opportunity, limited number of swings at the bat to get those types of easements in place. And, you know, there are, but there's a time when we can do that and there's a time when we're just not to that point yet. So, I can appreciate the wrestling match that's kind of had to have happened, and I'm happy to support where everyone has landed. You know, we, we struggle for trail space and, again, it's, it's looking out, you know, years ahead on where is that, where is that going to be and how do we achieve that? And, again, it's sometimes very cart before the horse, and so, I can appreciate the challenge at hand, so. Other questions or comments specific to the minor subdivision?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution 07-25-22-02. Making sure that we identify the six comments, recommendations by staff and that we abide by those six statements.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. Thank you for being here this evening. All right. With that, we will move into staff updates. That is the end of our planned regular agenda this evening, and we'll just kind of go around the dais as we typically do and start with Dan.
Thank you, Mary Bean. I did receive email from Minnesota Department of Revenue about the, excuse me, about training. You guys should have all received it, about training for the Board of Appeals for next year. And so, that training ends in February. February 1st is when they close it, so your opportunity is from now until February 1st. I know we have elections coming, and so, you know, for those of you that may or may not be here, there's still time after elections to get that training in right up until February 1st. By statute, we're required to have at least one person trained. The county prefers to have at least two in the event that somebody is not available. So, just something to keep in mind, and I will probably route that again as we get closer to that date. That's about all I had.
I would just piggyback on this year was kind of like the master's class example of why that training is very helpful, and so, time very well spent in my opinion, so. Okay. Dan?
Mayor members of council, still moving forward on the website design, still tracking for an end-of-the-year launch of the new site. Meeting with our consultant group this next, I think, next Thursday to review the initial design concept. So, it's starting to get real, and we'll start, we'll have a new site up and running here by the end of the year. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Dan.
I just have a couple of quick updates. The Master Parks Trails Open Space Plan, we've been doing public feedback and engagement. The survey is still out, should be out till the end of the month. From that, we'll start working on doing some local focus groups with different segments of the community to kind of engage just local interests. And that survey is available online, I believe it's going out in that Friday email, but it's on our website if you need the link. We did post today for the city planner vacancy, that would be the replacement for Donovan's position. Bolton and Mike have been great, Nathan and Franny have been helping fill that gap, but trying to get somebody in-house full-time will be really beneficial, I think, for our development community. And then lastly, we're exploring some funding options to look at some potential comp plan amendments along the Highway 61 corridor. There's, we're looking at that because we're starting to receive a lot of inquiries specifically for contracting services, headquarters, people looking at 20 to 30 acres in size, and right now, we're not really guided for that. So, we're looking to see where we might be able to amend our comp plan. That's certainly something that we'll bring back before this commission if we start moving in that direction, but we're really trying to do that from an economic development lens of how we can encourage more business, retain more business, and attract more business in the community.
The area that you're, the areas that you're being asked about, are those highway commercial? Is that what it is today? And is that like the misalignment?
They're currently zoned, some are business park district, otherwise it's rural residential lands. They're guided for mixed use, which is half residential and then half commercial. So, we're really looking at that, kind of that southern portion of the city there that already serves a lot of those kind of more industrial contracting service sites, so.
And refresh my memory on the comprehensive plan, are we, so the comprehensive plan has that as mixed use further down?
Yeah. It really guided that mixed use and maybe some more of that high-density residential along that corridor.
Yeah.
Which isn't a bad option, but I think our market forces are changing to where we need to start looking at what is realistic and what is the community need now and into the future.
And what's the market going to bear? Yeah, I can appreciate that. Is, okay, I just, I'm recalling back from the comp plan discussions where there was a fair amount of intent on wanting that to be as flexible as possible, and what I'm hearing is maybe we just need a little bit of, make that even more broad than what was originally planned, so.
Yep, we'll be looking at our options for sure.
Okay. Pretty good. Thank you. And thank you for being responsive, just kind of seeing what the market's bringing forward, so it's, it was a plan, it doesn't need to be where we've locked, where we need to be locked in, so, okay, very good. Patrick?
Yes, a few things. We are working on a possible training session for city council, boards and commissions, plan commission, parks commission. We've worked with our attorneys to put a syllabus together and trying to find a date where we can have that training session for all, all those boards. It's a good idea to refresh everybody's knowledge of what they are supposed to do, what the proper etiquette is for meetings and so forth. So, we should have that shortly. Of course, we're working on the budget, and we'll be coming, probably at the next meeting with the budget calendar that shows you when we're going to be discussing the budget. Again, it's going to be condensed for a while, we'll start out with the general fund, we'll talk to you about the other, the water funds, utility funds, of course. We will give you a look at a tenure projections on each of those funds now. I think we're getting as close as we ever been to having those complete. And of course, the biggest challenges are the capital equipment, capital improvements in the streets, and we'll have a proposed solution, whether you like it or not, we'll have a proposed solution for those. And we also sometime, hopefully in the budget process this fall, we'll talk about the downtown plan, CIP, and possible scenarios of how to fund it, but also how to slot those things within the next 10 years, or maybe even 20. Dan already in the packet talked about Midco, that's exciting. And we will have a closed session at the next meeting regarding labor negotiations. We have two contracts, both with, one with police sergeants, one with patrolmen. The labor attorney will be here, I believe, remotely, but to discuss the city council what your vision is for that contract, those two contracts, so be aware of that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Patrick, two quick things on the training I know is, that's being scheduled and planned. Can we do something to memorialize that training so that it is available for, you know, the commission member that may join us two months from now that may not be able to be there and just looking to have that be?
Sure, if I don't miss, my guess it'll probably be in this chamber, and we can tape that to, I'm sure that we can get that filmed and recorded and available. But, we'll know that in a few days here.
Okay, excellent. And then, we've kind of, we've done different things related to budget meetings. There are, have been years where we've been able to accommodate those budget discussions within planned council times. There have been other years where we've had to have some special, like Wednesday night working sessions, just knowing summer schedules are in for full bore. Do you have any thoughts on any, needing to schedule special sessions outside of ordinary council times?
Knowing that it's summer, with both the budget discussions and with the training, I know that that's, schedules are complicated because it's the end of the summer and people are trying to get their last things, and so, we will work on that, probably give you some dates. We will probably have to have both on council, and we'll try to keep it with the work sessions and try to keep it with council discussion areas. I believe the first real look at the budget will either be the August work session or the council agenda, the last second meeting.
Okay.
Then we'll try to schedule, we haven't worked out the schedule entirely, but we're going to try to stay on the workshops and then have smaller discussions during the budget, for the budget during the council meetings.
During council meetings.
If we need special ones, which I'm not sure we will need it, but some of the meetings may be a little longer than usual, obviously, so.
Okay.
I know one of the things we talked about, you know, shortly after our Board of Appeals, was the needing to better understand the impact of that increased valuation on our community members in the bigger context of the budget.
Right now, we are going through, there's new legislation regarding what we have to do for the budget and what we have to do for the levy, which, you know, a lot of that is included in that material. We are still trying to get direction from the league exactly what that means, but it's definitely more catered to the homeowner and what the impact of the levy increase is going to be and why. So, we have to meet those requirements, we're just trying to figure out how we're going to meet those at this point.
Okay. Is that, does that translate into the changing of the proposed statements, the proposed tax information that would be sent to them?
It's exactly what it is. It's a notice of the tax that goes to the proposed tax, and it has to include some of the impacts, and I believe, I'm not sure, it may have to be individualized for parcels, I just don't recall offhand, but I think it does, so.
Understood. Okay. I can appreciate there's been pressure to make that more transparent, so that helps all of us for, just being better informed in people, so, yeah, okay, that's great. Pete?
Evening, Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
All right, very good. Dave?
No updates this evening.
Just one question for Dave. Are we doing on the water with the drought thing going on again?
I think last year with usage and people got their water bills after they irrigated every single day all summer, they used a lot, so our numbers are significantly lower than they were last year.
Okay.
We were at about between two and two and a half million a day. Last year, we were close to three million a day.
Wow.
So, I would be very hopeful to put out our reader boards and signs and tell people to conserve it. It's up like normal, but it's not like it was last year, so sometimes by the price taken on your water bill, it reduces some usage, so we're saying very well.
Okay, so, so far, we're okay, okay. Thanks.
Very good.
Any, any updates on the Castlewood Clubhouse, Dave?
Yeah, so, the state finally got our plumbing permit back, our approval, that took almost 10 weeks to get that back, so plumbers should be in this week, electrician will be in next week to bury a conduit. We can heat up the concrete to get it poured, and then they come back a week later polished and start to frame it up. So, the hope is to get A-trac and everything in by fall, so then we can finish it off over the winter time and hope just to get the bugs out of it through the winter and it'll be ready for your next frame in a similar year or year. So, the overall plan is to have a little bit of a snag, but it should start to come together as long as we can get everything heated and sealed up for the winter, so.
Very good. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, the Chamber Call event was today.
Yeah.
It was a great success. And just kind of looking back and thinking about it, I think there actually have a lot of faces there. I thought I heard they made a calendar, but this was the most callers they've ever had, so.
Fabulous.
When you think about all the faces that Dan, Mark, and I saw, I think they drew that, so it was great. Also, they'll put out new calendars, upcoming public engagement meeting coming up, former county stated Highway 32 or 11th Avenue is planned for August 15th, 4:30 to 6:30 upstairs in community room, that's prior to your city council workshop that night. It's going to be critical that you call with this project early, just so you understand some decisions that you're going to go into this project specifically, you know, right now, that county road, you can park on both sides of the street, right? You know, kind of the footprint of the county came in with county stated Highway 33, that's going to be their desire here again, unless there's some public feedback on how you guys want to control some of that stuff or what you really want to implement in the project, you know, it's going to be tough to accommodate parking ops, you both sides, and have pedestrian facilities. Close on those things you have to weigh in something, the conversation's moving forward, but if we're engaged early, you're going to have a better understanding of the project and what implications of some of your decisions will carry to the project. So, just encourage you to attend that, so if nothing else, just be there to listen, 4:30 to 6:30 and August 15th, for the county stated Highway 32, public engagement meeting.
Format of that meeting, are they intending to have first part, like a workshop or an open house and then a presentation, or is it kind of all?
I'll probably find out a lot more tomorrow.
Okay.
What that is, we have a PMT, Project Management meeting tomorrow.
Perfect.
I'm sure that'd be our biggest thing that we talked about is the public engagement.
Excellent. Excellent. So, 4:30 and the 15th, though?
And do we send formal invites to residents in that area?
They're mapping and mailing stuff out.
Okay.
And then they're going to probably provide us stuff to put on cities' social media plus Washington County's social media and stuff like that. plus Washington County's social media and stuff like that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Ryan. Chief?
Yeah, Mayor and city council members, good evening. The only update I have for you is just a reminder for you and all of our community members that Tuesday, August second, is going to be unite to unite and police and fire will be out at approximately twenty-five to twenty-six block parties that we know of at this time and we're also going to be at Arts in the Park, meeting and greeting people and answering any questions they have.
Very good. Chief, in the past, we've done available council members to ride along and attend, attend to those various meetings with officers, is that something we're able to?
Sure.
Do this year and?
You can reach out to me.
Perfect.
And just let me know if you would be interested in doing that.
Excellent.
Otherwise, if you'd rather not ride with officers, you're more than welcome to come to Arts in the Park and, and see quite a few people there and I'll be at, at that location as well.
Very good. And those start at what time?
You know, a lot of the block parties start at different times.
Yeah.
Some start as early as four, others start around five or six.
Okay. Very good, and we can reach out to, to you to kind of coordinate if we're.
Yeah.
Ride with, okay, very good. All right. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And Kevin?
Mayor City Council, the finance department's new administrative assistant for utility billing started today, so are happy to have Holly Cedarblade on board with us. And also this reminder to residents that, and city council, that the second core utility bills went out about two weeks ago. We did update our website to explain some of the increases that they will see on those invoices based on water, spring, summer rates specific to water, just so they can have some clarification on there and we encourage residents to reach out via email or phone, which is on our website as well, to have any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Kevin? All right, let's move it back to council for updates and we'll start with council member Munson.
No update tonight.
All right, council member Beistrum.
No update for me.
All right, council member Hesnick.
Since the last council meeting, which is a while back.
It was.
We, we attended the, you and I both attended the joint fire board meeting and it was mainly discussing, it was a, a discussion on, nothing was really decided, it was just a discussion on retention and, and wages and, and all kinds of different things that helped brought us up to date on, so it was very, very good. Also, I attended the last EDA meeting, which was also a workshop type thing and I think I'm sure exactly what, what we talked about in all those, but I did make those meetings, so anyways, that's all I have. Thanks.
Council member Valento?
Nothing for me.
All right.
Just quick update, just I had opportunity in the last kind of month to cycle through and to kind of visit with both planning commission, Parks, Lakes and Trails and then obviously also with the EDA on kind of getting final feedback on the downtown plan and just thanks again to each of those committees for all of that work and we've had great discussion and it's great to see the engagement and look forward to working with everyone kind of on the next steps going forward. With that, looks like we've, I know we've got some time coming up in August for some longer meetings with the budget coming up and budget cycle and so with that, I am happy to entertain an earlier than usual adjournment for this evening because we will have lots of work to do and meetings coming up.
I'll move.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose and word turned. Good night, everybody.